I want to give the people some spicy content, something interesting. Because what I've noticed is sometimes these types of, you know, political pitch interviews can be a little sanitized and like, you know, stick to the script and.
It is a problem.
Just gotta.
It's hard to make candidates interesting.
Speak the truth.
We're rolling. We are rolling.
All I know. This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the wedge neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
We are back on the Wedge Life Podcast for the first bike ride episode of 2025 with Councilmember Katie Cashman, who represents Ward Seven, which is on that side of Hennepin Avenue, the other side.
The west.
That's East Isles. We're standing in the wedge. Are you ready to mount up?
Let's go. Let's do this. Let's hit the lakes.
This is the first episode happening on, on the new Hennepin Avenue Bike Lane. I'm excited.
Very exciting. I took this lane yesterday coming from Muna Muno, the new coffee shop in Uptown. And I was heading downtown for the committee and it just started downpour raining on me. So, you know, today is an improvement to that experience.
It's a beautiful day.
It really is.
I was worried it'd be a little dreary because we had to reschedule this, but it's great. The sun's out. Let's start with a controversial issue.
Hit me.
Drive-through ban. I saw a thing in MimPost where St. Paul is slow walking their effort to regulate uh drive-throughs. And I'm thinking I haven't, I haven't regretted that ban in Minneapolis for a second since it happened, but what's your position?
Yeah, I mean, there's not that many drive-throughs. There's a Wendy's on Franklin. There's a few drive-throughs down in Ward 11, I think. And I believe they're grandfathered in, if I remember correctly.
The existing ones are fine.
So it's just like a ban on new drive-throughs, which I think is perfectly fine. I'm really hoping we get some of those Taco Bell cantinas, like they have in Chicago, where it's like an urban Taco Bell and they actually sell alcoholic beverages and it's a whole experience.
Well, here in Minnesota, everyone's proud of that like 18-lane Taco Bell drive-through that has no dining room. That's the latest rage.
Is that Golden Valley?
It's one of the suburbs.
Yeah, it's like out by the animal hospital.
But uh, give us your reaction to this street, this beautiful new street.
You know, I really like the median. I'm not gonna lie. I have known Hennepin Avenue for a long time. I've been in like several accidents on this road, so I just feel like it's a lot safer now and easier to cross. And just a lot prettier. I mean, the pavement is so much better. The first time I ever came on the Wedge Live, Wedge Live Podcast, I had that day fell in a pothole on Hennepin Avenue and busted my tire.
Is that why you needed me, you needed my pump?
No, it was a bike, it was a, a car.
Oh, a car tire?
Car tire. So I just think it's um, it's a lot nicer and it's gonna be great once it's done. I think now that this portion from 26th going to Lake Street is completed, a lot more people can imagine what it, what it's like and you can see that there's still a lot of street parking here. So, you know, that's still there to a large extent. And I think all the drama around establishing the plan is starting to fade. So we can focus on like how to make this design the best it can be for the most amount of people.
A year from now, nobody's gonna remember that they hated this because it will just be embedded in their life.
I mean, I hope so. There's always gonna be people who are disappointed by a street outcome, depending on what, what your main transportation modes are, but. So this was extremely gratifying for me because I was a, I was an organizer with Sierra Club back in 2013, when we were advocating for the complete streets policy. And I remember being, the bike mode share being like 3% at that time. And we've just come a long way. So I know it's been 12 years, but it's still like a, a nice, nice to see your efforts pay off.
I'm savoring the wins and hoping we can like cement them because we've done a lot of good things in the last 10 or so years.
Right. And now with e-bikes too, I think it makes biking even more accessible. You know, a lot, my, my dad and stepmom and my partner's dad, who are in their late 60s, ride their e-bikes and just have a grand old time and can like do the whole, you know, Grand Rounds 40-mile experience. And so e-bikes are a great invention. I also want to mention that the bike, secure bike parking pilot is finally rolling out.
I saw that.
This uh fall, which was one of the first things that I approved through the Climate Infrastructure Committee when I joined the council. So it's great to see it.
Now, here's a terrible, terrible connection to the next stage.
Yes.
They've got us going from one new bike route.
Here we are.
To another on the sidewalk. And they just built both of them. And now we've got to menace some pedestrians.
This isn't great, not gonna lie, but.
And it even says on the sidewalk, no bike riding.
No bike connection.
This is a hard time to be optimistic in the world, but I'm, I had been very optimistic that Uptown is like on the way back, like.
What makes you feel optimistic?
I mean, we're getting the reconstruction behind us, which was gonna be tough for businesses regardless. You shut down a street to rebuild. It's gonna be, it's gonna be tough. And.
It wasn't just reconstruction, you know, it was the pandemic.
Yeah, it was a pandemic.
And civil unrest. And like, people are shopping online. I think a lot of people forget that instead of going to the store to buy dog food, a lot of people just buy it on Amazon or whatever. And like, that really impacts the ability for local businesses to thrive.
People have compressed all of those things and pretended it was just the reconstruction. I'm glad you point that out.
It's an easy scapegoat. I mean, I'm not gonna pretend that construction is fun. It's not. It's really expensive. But at the end of the day, we are so lucky to have this quality of streets and pavement and to have had all of that Inflation Reduction Act money come from the Biden administration. Like, we are not gonna see federal funding for infrastructure projects the next four years. So I have a lot of gratitude for what we were able to do in the Biden era and what, you know, what's happening this year thanks to that. I think we used that money pretty wisely and made the most out of it.
Another reason for optimism is the public safety. The crime stats are getting a little more in line with the national trend downward.
Still above, still above pre-pandemic levels.
By a little bit, but like, it's definitely below 2020. It is more similar to 2019 than it is to uh 2021 and, and post.
I think we still have a lot of residual trauma from so much crime that occurred in the last four or five years. I mean, as I'm talking to constituents about public safety, the memories and experiences of theft and robberies and burglary, like assaults, carjackings that people experienced are really, really difficult to like, to process, especially because we don't do a great job with victim services or clearing investigations. Which is why I feel like those more like soft skill parts of our public safety ecosystem are so important. Because if you don't have closure through the closure of your actual investigation, then how can you get personal closure to what you experienced?
Uh, we're, we're going to Bide Amicus, correct?
Let's do it. And the sailboats are out. Love to see it.
So your opponent has uh, it's happening in a lot of wards where the challengers, the more moderate challengers, if that's the word we're using, are going after crime and public safety and police staffing and police funding. And I'm thinking, the person you are running against, campaigning against, uh, one year on the job, staffing line is up, new contract approved, record police pay increases, these are all things you say you're campaigning to do. And uh, the person you're running against actually did it. If you wanted to get aggressive at the Ward Seven Convention, you could say, Elizabeth Schaefer, I did those things already. That'd be a very, very mayor fry thing of you to do.
I would never single-handedly take credit for anything that happens in the city because I'm not a narcissist.
But like, you're getting, you're getting a mayor's share of the blame. I feel like, if you're gonna give me a mayor's share of the blame, I can at least point out how all of the things you say you want are happening the first year that I'm in office.
Yeah, we made some great strides last year.
I will cut this part out. Nobody wants video of you. Water fountain.
One of my long-term goals for Minneapolis is to exponentially increase the amount of free water and free bathrooms throughout the city. Someone should make like a map or an inventory of what we do have.
I usually have an easy time finding a water fountain. The problem I have is the park board shuts them down.
In the winter?
Yeah. And I get why they have to do that, but.
Right.
Where do I find water when I'm thirsty? Same with bathrooms. Like, I'm the kind of person who is out and about without a vehicle. And, you know, sometimes you gotta pee.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, especially downtown. Not to be too downtown-centric, Uptown definitely needs these things as well. But downtown just has the lion's share of people and visitors to the city and tourists don't know their way around. We want them to have a good experience here. And some of the best cities in the world that people love to visit are the ones that have a lot of public amenities. But back to crime.
Yeah.
I definitely feel like our comprehensive approach is starting to show results. Like, it's a both and for me. I, as you know, supported the police contract, actually kind of shepherded the approval of it because I felt like increasing the base pay of officers was the most practical and sustainable way to improve recruitment. Instead of like a one-off bonus situation, like increasing the salaries, 22% over five years is a more long-term, sustainable way to attract people to wanna work as police officers in Minneapolis. And I think it is working. Like, we ended up with 11 more officers at the end of the year than we had at the beginning of 2024.
For the first time since uh 2020, like.
Yeah.
The staffing trend is up and not straight down.
Staffing trend is up, recruitment is up. You know, we had that Imagine Yourself campaign as well, like the social media campaign that we invested about $500,000 in. It was at 1.5 million last year. But I just saw the, the rollover that we, the council approved last cycle, um, shows that we have like $240,000 left.
In the social media campaign?
In the social media campaign, like the ad buys and all that.
That's the thing that you've been criticized for not funding, still has money in it?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Yep. I'll show you the, uh, I'll show you the receipts.
Cause my next question was gonna be.
Misinformation is pervasive right now in this election cycle. And a lot of what I'm doing on the campaign trail is just educating folks on what's what. And it's really frustrating to be in such a highly educated city, in such an informed, you know, progressive community. And to still have so many people like falling victim to sensationalized, fear-mongering misinformation.
Well, these are very smart people, so I would say motivated reasoning and not, not that they're like victims of.
Well, yeah, like saying Katie cut the funding for the police recruitment budget is really snappy and gets, it's like something that my detractors can grab onto and spread.
I'll tell you what's happening. The mayor is setting the budget for police-related things at a, an extremely high level to the degree that you can't spend it all. So when someone comes and says, hey, we've got a lot of money in here, maybe we should uh spend it somewhere else because we've got plenty left over to keep spending, they could say you defunded the police.
Right. I mean, we, we transferred the money out of the stable lease for the police horses. We cleared that whole budget and put it towards crime prevention and other things. And yet the police horses are still out on West River Road. So it's just a perfect example of like, they do have flexibility in their budgets. And, you know, one could say that they should because departments know best how to spend their resources. Like, we don't wanna completely micromanage. But yeah, there is funding to be moved around within their, what is it, $220 million annual budget.
Should we do a lakeside chat?
This is gorgeous.
Violence interrupters, the mismanagement of the violence interrupters. Uh, what do you attribute that to? How do we resolve that? It's been an all, it seems like a drip, 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 constant stream of stories about how it's not managed very well.
Yeah, I mean, I think council is not surprised to see another story come out. I think it was today that several violence interrupter contracts are on the fritz right now. I think that the department is asking for a lot more accountability from the providers and the providers aren't used to having to do all that due diligence. But at the same time, like accountability and transparency is what the taxpayers deserve. But you know, I just think that like the, the commissioner, Todd Barnett, and the mayor have been sugarcoating and like painting a rosy picture of how this department has been run for a couple of years now. And when the council points out some of these discrepancies or flaws or mismanagement, you know, we're kind of like taking the brunt of that criticism. But it's like, we're just trying to do our jobs, which is to be the watchdog over taxpayer money and making sure that it's spent correctly and that we're getting the services that we pay for.
This dynamic keeps happening.
Yeah.
Things that the mayor is responsible for because the council, like has a conversation about it.
Our meetings are public.
Right.
His are not.
So it's, it's great that as we're talking here lakeside, that people are dancing all around us.
Like, we're in a fairyland, I swear. Like, Minneapolis is truly like the ideal place to be a forest nymph.
I had a great question, but the dancers distracted me. I was gonna follow up with something. Oh. So, and I talked to Paula Chesley, who's another candidate, and I've known Paula for, for a while. I think she went out and like scoped out violence interrupters one night and was like, Katie Cashman said they would be here. I can't find them. And I pointed out to her in our conversation that like Katie Cashman can't tell the violence interrupters where to go. And I think you use language like, I asked them to come out to Uptown. And like, I was telling her, you're not the boss of the violence interrupters, so if they're not where they need to be.
I mean, I found out that those violence interrupters were gonna be in Uptown literally the same day that all those neighbors did. And I just got this email from the Neighborhood Safety Department. And I just, like, the least I can do is forward that information to neighborhood leaders. But I had no part in making that decision, overseeing their work, aligning their schedules, figuring out what their contract looked like whatsoever.
Ward Seven is a high-information ward. Like, they know a lot about their government. But I wonder, like, do people understand the government structure where the mayor is uh, you know, if you have a problem with the city department or a city employee who is not like a council aide, like that, that person reports up to the mayor.
Yeah, I mean, do people know that the city has more than 4,000 employees? And that the city council or the legislative department only accounts for like 100 of those.
Right.
But yeah, we're, we're the public face of the city. And like, that's the job that you sign up for. You sign up to be an ambassador and like the first stop for constituents. I have no problem with people coming to me to access the city. Like, that's why I ran for office. Because I want the most amount of people in Minneapolis to be able to access all the resources from this $1.9 billion enterprise and to benefit from it. But I do think that there's, there's a level of willful ignorance that people who are anti-council are weaponing, weaponizing. And like, spreading anti-council messaging is a very authoritarian slash fascist slash Trumpian thing to do because it's really just minimizing the legislative body and trying to marginalize them and say like, you know, let's just have this executive make all the decisions with no oversight or accountability. So I get that people think that the council is messy because we expose mess.
Right.
But we're not creating the mess. We're just like privy to it and doing everything we can to bring transparency to the things that are happening in the city.
Oh, shoot.
Here's your bike.
Let's get back on our bikes.
Let's do it.
Mine fell over.
That was your bike saying, come on. Don't leave me here.
So Ward Seven, fun fact. Lisa Goodman was in office for 26 years. And you have been in office for a year and some months. I keep repeating this because I feel like there's a lot of resentment, like Lisa Goodman is gone and now Katie Cashman is here, among people who love Lisa Goodman. And I noticed that dynamic in Ward 10 when Lisa Bender defeated uh Meg Tuthill in 2013. Like a lot, do you feel that resentment?
Change is hard, John.
They're coming for you though. It's only been a year.
Yeah. I mean, it was, it was pretty immediate. There was a lot of people, there's someone on your left. There was a lot of people who were really surprised that I won the election in Ward Seven. I mean, including myself.
Including me.
Yeah, exactly. And I think it just showed like, you know, people who had been, you know, a little bit marginalized for a while, were like ready for representation. Those people might be like young people and renters, working-class families, people who voted for me, you know? So those folks are certainly happy to have representation, but there is a group of really privileged folks in Ward Seven who feel like they lost a little bit of the access that they had to City Hall through Councilmember Goodman. And I'm trying to build that, I swear. Like, I, I emailed them and asked for one-on-one meetings. I'm like, hey, I wanna be just as helpful to you as she was. And I think that can happen with time, but it's only been, it's only been one year and council had an extremely productive year. You know, we passed more legislation in the first seven months than in the entire last two-year term before that. So it was a really busy policy year. And that may have contributed to some folks in Ward Seven feel like I wasn't prioritizing constituent service as much as Lisa Goodman had. So lots of learnings. Like, I'm here for the feedback. I do not shy away from that and I've received a lot of it. So I feel like that, you know, constructive feedback is always good. And like a chance to reorient and try to serve everyone equitably. I think my neighborhood and some of the other downtown, like heavy renter neighborhoods, um, just didn't see as much accessibility or like access from council for a while. And so it's been really exciting to see like a lot of new groups of people step into community engagement. Uh, I'll just give an example, like the Brentwood Tenants Union, it's like 161 tenants in Loring Park who are using the new right to organize law that passed through the state legislature. And they're like claiming their power and coming out to all the neighborhood meetings. They joined the Loring Park Neighborhood Board.
Uh, so we've got multiple PACs in Minneapolis right now.
Oh, yeah.
Two supporting the mayor. And one of them put out, I was delighted to see, put out this uh, kinda zany questionnaire that only their side really filled out. And one of the questions was like, do you support any addition, very open-ended, like, do you support any additional renter protections in Minneapolis? And there were five, there were three council members and two like plausible challengers who said, no. I can't foresee any. One of them is Elizabeth Schaefer. And it like blew my mind that in a ward that is 65% renter, here I am campaigning for you here on the Wedge Life Podcast, but it blew my mind. I think it's like 65% renter in Ward Seven?
Yeah, it is.
And she said, no, I can't foresee any possible renter protections. Why would you say that? If you reversed the question and made it homeowners, people say, of course. Oh, we need to support our homeowners.
More rights for homeowners.
And more protections, more rights, cut, cut the taxes. We need, they need protection. Like, that's fine. Like, everyone needs something. Why, why would you say no to that? I don't know.
Yeah, it's gonna be a deeply unpopular opinion to pedal on the campaign trail if you're gonna be door-knocking in rental buildings. Not everyone does. Turn out renters to vote. Uh, but it's certainly a constituency that I care about. I mean, I think answering no to that question is a really good litmus test for whether those people actively seek equity in our city or if they're fully comfortable with the status quo. We still have a deeply segregated city in terms of housing.
Right.
With the history of redlining and whatnot. I mean, there, there are neighborhoods that still don't have rental buildings or, you know, people of color living in them. Um, so I just feel like we need housing of every type in every neighborhood to diversify our neighborhoods too and make them accessible to anyone, no matter what income level you're at.
It's a little bit of a surprising stat, 65% of Ward Seven is renters, because when people think of Ward Seven, and I'm including myself here, you think of the lakes neighborhoods where all the political power is, where you think the political power is. Unless you turn out uh, you know, more of Loring Park in downtown.
That's right. I feel like the 161 units at Brentwood Apartments is probably the same land area as Tom Hoak's house. That's 161 votes versus one. Like, tell me where the power is, you know?
This episode is sponsored by ZipTies because a zip tie just saved my camera. I think I need to add a zip tie to my rig here because it's, camera just keeps wobbling. I'm gonna stop. Is there anything you came to the Wedge Live Bike Ride Podcast hoping that we would talk about?
Oh, yeah.
Tell me what it is.
Vibrant storefronts.
Vibrant storefronts. Now, that, that phrase, just the phrase irritates me.
Why?
The word vibrant is such a nothing phrase. Everyone says it, nobody knows what it means.
It's lost its meaning.
And like, people promise, like, oh, I, me, a council member, or me, a mayor, I'm gonna, everything's gonna be more vibrant because of me. You wanted to talk about it.
Well, tonight is the grand opening of one of the vibrant storefronts projects and the soft opening of another one. And it's just really amazing to see the renovations that they've, they've made to these historic buildings.
Where is it happening?
Harmon Place, 6 to 10, Flavor World. Which I was told today sounds like a restaurant name, but it's actually an art collective. They, they make a magazine called Flavor Mag and they also do a lot of music and recording. But yeah, they've really transformed the Fast Print space on Harmon Place and brought a lot of life into the neighborhood. So there's a creative cluster. Oh, bald eagle.
Oh, it's a bald eagle.
You feel proud to be American?
I don't know if we're catching the bald eagle, but there's certainly a bald eagle here on our podcast. Okay. Well, how much money did you put into the vibrant storefronts? Did that cost money?
Yeah, but it's a really smart investment and it's not as much as you'd think. Like, each of these grantees, I think, gets about $50,000 for a two-year lease on the space. And so last year, we were able to fund five spaces in Loring Park, all on Harmon Place. Like the former Eli's, the former Fast Print, um, Twin Cities Pride, which is open, Black Business Enterprises, Blackbird Revolt. And then this year, we have 15 more spots included.
So is it a citywide program?
It's almost exclusively in Ward Seven.
Look at you with your earmarks.
It's, it's, it was just, it happened like that.
It just happened to happen?
It's downtown and uptown.
Okay.
In Loring Park. I mean, we have also the cultural districts. Are you familiar with that? It's like Lake Street, Central Ave. They also receive arts funding for Cultural District Arts Fund program. But the Vibrant Storefronts Arts and Cultural Affairs program is in Loring Park, downtown and uptown.
Because those areas don't have cultural districts? Is that the motivation?
And have the most amount of vacancies because they're so heavily commercial. But this is like, it's a really good way to spend city money to help revitalize commercial corridors. And there will be five vibrant storefronts opening up on the Lake and Hennepin intersection as well later this year.
So the council uh toughened up the vacant building fees recently?
Yes.
And I'm skeptical that that's making a difference because I don't think all the buildings that qualify are being listed on the list. And if you're not on the list, you're not getting the extra fees.
Right.
And for example, the Victoria's Secret storefront, that hasn't been a Victoria's Secret in many, many years. And is still boarded up?
Yeah, the vacant building registry is not comprehensive. It doesn't cover every vacant building. And it certainly doesn't cover like partial vacancies, which is the case for a lot of our vacancies where they, you know, aren't the entire building.
Right.
Um, so I know that the council members who authored that, I think it's Ellison and Wonsley, are looking at how to expand the registry itself and how to collect that data. And I think they're looking into how the post office data uh could be a way to track vacancy. I think a lot of times people think that the city has like this magic wand where we know everything about every building. Even Hennepin County is the one that has the property tax records where you can look at the owners of every building. But, you know, we're a municipality at the end of the day. We're not some like magic god. But keep in mind, the VBR reform just went into effect this year. So we're only four months in.
Okay.
And the fees on those vacant properties are doubling month after month. on those vacant properties are doubling month after month. So there's gonna be a breaking point for some of those building owners when they say, these fees are getting out of control, it's time to sell this asset. So.
We hope, fingers crossed. So I've been very nice to you, Katie Cashman, because I think Ward Seven is, it's important that you get reelected. I'll say that. I don't often say that when I'm talking to someone.
Thanks, John. Certainly doing my best to secure a four-year term. I mean, there's so much more that we could build on with the progress that we made last year on a lot of these issues, but there's so much more we could build on with a four-year term and I really want to lean into housing policy more. And I think like we have to kind of shift our thinking around housing. We have to evolve our housing policies in the city, so I would love to do that. I would also love to continue building out comprehensive public safety and as we talked about, like making our violence prevention programs work, functional. And then also shouldering, shouldering the Trump presidency, like budgets are gonna get really tight.
Right.
We have to diversify our revenue sources so that all of those impacts don't fall on property owners. Which, by the way, renters pay property taxes.
This is true. So when this gets talked about, one of the options is uh like an income tax on high earners in addition to like the traditional sales tax route. That's a tricky one for you because you are in Ward Seven, capital of the high earners.
Right.
So let me ask you the, a tough question now that after I've been so nice to you. What do we say about an income tax targeted at high earners to ease the burden on property taxpayers who uh, that's a less progressive way of taxing?
I actually don't have a strong opinion on that. I would tell you if I did.
Okay.
But I just haven't done enough research on it. I do know that there are a couple of revenue sources that I'd like to increase in the city, so I could talk a little bit about those.
What do you like?
One is the Downtown Assets Fund, one of the funds at the city that's really healthy and growing. And it's, it's supplied by the local option sales taxes, so the liquor tax, food and beverage tax, entertainment tax, lodging tax, and we're able to use that money for economic development, so it really fulfills its promise. And there's a couple of ways that we could increase the money that's brought in through that fund. One is by expanding the taxing boundary to include the North Loop, which I think many would agree is part of downtown. And it's actually the part of downtown that's doing the best economically, so it makes perfect sense for them to contribute to this fund. And then the second way is actually putting a lodging tax on Airbnb, because only hotels, there's like 42 hotels in the city, they're the only ones who pay the lodging tax, or I guess their customers do. Puts them at a competitive disadvantage with Airbnb and the city actually has the authority to charge a lodging tax on short-term rentals like Airbnb. I do get complaints from constituents who live in rental buildings where they're, the owner of their building is renting out several units to Airbnb, but then charging the utility burden of that Airbnb rental to the people who live there. So I think that it's time for us to look into this again and, you know, charge the lodging tax on Airbnb. It would bring in, I don't know how much more money for the city, but help us offset this like burden of property taxes. The other fund that we could increase would be our franchise fees that we charge for gas and electric through Center Point and XL. It's how we um fund our climate work in the city. But it brings in about $40 million a year. And we're only spending 25% of it on climate. The rest of it goes to the general fund. So we could increase those fees as well as another revenue source and help offset these property tax levies that I think a lot of people would agree are getting a little too high.
So are you a flat no on rent stabilization? I forget what the, the 2023 position was.
I am a no on rent stabilization.
Is it basically?
But you know, I'm like, I'm fully in support of renters' rights. We've passed quite a few good renters' rights in the last year. Which is likely why all of those big landlord companies are pouring tens of thousands of dollars into the PACs to try to get us out of office. I mean, that's kind of disturbing. When I talk to, when I talk to constituents who live in Hornig buildings, for example, and they find out that Hornig, the company, put $30,000 into the We Love Minneapolis PAC, they're like, oh, that's where my rent is going? Like, that's not in my contract. I didn't sign up for my rent money to pay for political lobbying. Like, my rent money is supposed to be paid on improving this building.
We may have discovered why candidates are answering no to the question, can you foresee any potential renter protections in Minneapolis? Any additional ones?
Yeah, I mean, talk about special interest groups, like that is a special interest group to a T. Big landlords.
This is a painful transition because uh, the algorithmic pricing thing, you voted against banning it, and I'm wondering why? Because to me, it seems like a clear-cut antitrust like price fixing case, so I'm wondering, uh, why would you vote against the ban?
I remember getting a text from you about that. It was just a position that I had where I feel felt like I didn't get enough information about the legislation being proposed before it was up for a vote. And I'm a little skeptical of the past legislation that could potentially come back to bite us in the sense that we could be sued and have to settle court cases to the tune of millions of dollars because we didn't design the legislation. And that's probably not the case with this. I'm sure we're fine. Like, real page of suing Berkeley, or like the city of Berkeley, for their ban. And I'm sure, like, Jeremiah Ellison and Ron Wonsley are very, very smart and did their due diligence, but I felt like I personally didn't have my questions answered about how it would work. And I think there's been a couple other cases of things like that that came up last year where there was a risk, a legal risk. And I wanted us to be careful. Like, one example of that was the P-Car, the carbon fee. Where we put like a finite number into the legislation for the co- cost of carbon equivalents. And you know, the staff was saying, I think we should put TBD in its place and do a more elaborate study in order to determine that rate. And that's the amendment that I proposed. Didn't pass. But it was an effort to like fend off potential litigation from big corporations that could potentially undo our efforts.
Let's see, uh, do you have any hopes and dreams? So we finished our legal battle in defense of the 2040 Plan. Now we're on the 2050 Plan in your next term. Ideally. You got, you got hopes and dreams for the 2050 Plan?
There's a piece of that that we have been flirting with, but not really discussing. And I think it's the neighborhood level retail or neighborhood level commercial zoning. Can we make another water stop?
Uh, yeah, I got one right here.
Right.
Love your yard signs.
Nice job.
I see that guy all the time.
Nice.
With his yard signs.
I'm gonna go for the kid-sized water here.
You see, I am not as bold as you with the water fountains because public restrooms are just nowhere to be found.
I mean, who doesn't love a free bathroom? Give the people what they want. The people want bathrooms. Well, there's one other 2050 thing, which is just wild to think about planning for the year 2050.
Right. We're getting, we're getting to the point with these comprehensive plans where it's conceivable I will be dead. And that doesn't feel good.
Are you serious?
I mean,
You're not that old.
I could be dead by 2050. It is conceivable.
What, are you like 60?
What?
I'm just kidding. I'm really glad I didn't grow up in the 80s because I feel like that's just like the height of capitalism.
Are we not now at the height of capitalism?
Post, we're like late-stage, the fall of capitalism. I don't know what we're in, but it's not good.
Yeah. All, all these so-called capitalists are tariffing the hell out of embalming the economy right now?
I like how he posted the tariffs video about the Bryn Mawr Market.
Bryn Mawr Market has been the heart of this community for decades, but the next visit could cost more.
Uh, I mean, we're all screwed.
Oh, yeah, we're all screwed.
Yeah, he's just keeping it real, you know? But anyway, like Bryn Mawr Market is a perfect example of like a neighborhood level convenience store that I think a lot of us would really love to have within walking distance that we could smartly plan for.
People like having a convenient local store with friendly faces.
And then I think the 2050 Plan should also look at setbacks and like how to bring some buildings like closer to the road edge. I do see Minneapolis densifying and allowing for more people to move here, especially with how like anti-immigrant other places are versus us.
Yeah.
So if we want to be welcoming people, which we do, then we need to be building more housing for them to live in.
I mean, just anecdotally, if you scan through Reddit, it's been a huge uptick in people like, I'm moving to Minneapolis because I am, I fear for my safety here, or I hate where I live.
That's what we want.
I hear you guys do it better. And I'm thinking back to the uh, the 2040 Plan debate, you say that like we should want people to move here. This is pre-COVID, we're debating the 2040 Plan. And it's just, and this isn't a majority position, obviously, because it passed 12 to 1. But like, people are just so against the idea of having people move to Minneapolis. And we, we should be desperate for it now, post-COVID, where we're trying to like create tax base for ourselves.
Yeah, and there's still a labor shortage in so many industries, so of course we want people to move here so that we can have a thriving economy. It is so wild to me that J.D. Vance is touting anti, like deportations as housing policy. When we were in the, we were at the National League of Cities Conference a few weeks back in DC. And J.D. Vance was the keynote speaker at the conference, and he comes into this room full of Minnesotan mayors and council members and is like, yeah, housing policy, like illegal immigrants are taking all of our housing, so if we deport them, we'll have so much more housing. And he got booed out of the room. And
It's like Carol Becker style.
So proud to be Minnesotan. I'm like, we know what's up. Like, we have zero tolerance for that bullshit. It was at the same time when Trump threatened to withhold a bunch of money from the city of DC, like the District of Columbia.
And then they took the mural off the street.
They swept their Black Lives Matter mural off the street. And then two days later, the continuing resolution passed and still defunded a billion dollars from the DC budget.
Yeah.
It's like, why comply when they're gonna take your money anyway? It's so bad.
They only respond to standing up, standing up to them. If you don't fight back, they're just gonna keep abusing you. It's uh typical bully stuff.
Exactly. They respond to a show of strength, like, yeah, this like work across the aisle thing that some Democrats are doing. Angie Craig and Amy Klobuchar, for example. Like, it sounds respectable and it sounds productive, but at the end of the day, it's not gonna get us anything. It's not gonna get the Democrats any more power and leverage. People really want Democrats to have a spine. I'm, I'm really proud of Tina Smith and the way that she has shown up, and of course, Ilhan.
So you had a rough go on caucus night. Is that an accurate description?
Oh, what a night.
Is there any hope at the Ward Seven Convention? Are you gonna say, uh, you, you got it wrapped up? You gonna win? Uh, you're looking to block? Can you say anything?
I think the majority of delegates are still uncommitted. I mean, that's just fact. We have a really good, deep canvassing effort going on right now where we're, you know, talking to uncommitted delegates, like meeting them where they're at and trying to like correct misinformation and make them feel comfortable in the direction that the city is going. And I think a lot of people still have an open mind, but yeah, I mean, the, those PACs, all of Minneapolis and, and We Love Minneapolis certainly turned out, a lot of conservative people. And I felt bad for some of, some of like the first-time caucus goers. You know, younger people or whatever who just moved into their neighborhoods, who came into the room and were like silenced and I talked to someone yesterday who said, oh, I brought a bunch of pamphlets for like a local cause, and I just walked in and realized like, nobody here is gonna be open to my ideas, and it kind of broke my heart.
Yeah.
So trying to show them like, we are, we are the many, like, we got this, you know, just gotta keep our head up and keep, keep doing what we've been doing. I sound like a Timberwolves coach right now. Just stay aggressive, you know?
Did you see Charlie Ryback's uh like anti-PAC, anti-caucus and convention thing? I'm gonna get us into a conversation about caucuses and conventions.
I haven't read that article yet. But I did see the headline.
Lot of conversation. Part of his argument is uh PACs are bad, which generally I agree with.
Agree with that, 100%.
You know, he was kind of both sides in a way that a lot of people found uh
Well, yeah, how much money does all of Minneapolis have versus Minneapolis for the many?
Not a level playing field. As David Brouwer said, it's, the progressive side is kind of in a defensive posture and have far less money than the other side. Uh, but then he's also going on against how caucuses and conventions are bad, and like, I agree with that. They are the worst thing ever, except for not having them and not replacing them with something else.
I don't know, man. I would definitely prefer a primary.
You would?
Yeah, because then you could vote at any time of the day that works for you. Like, having a caucus in person in the evening favors retired people or nine-to-five people with no kids.
It's true.
But people who work nights, AKA service workers, which are so many of the people in Ward Seven, because we have downtown. And then people with kids can't come out to caucus night easily. So that's why you walk into caucus rooms and it's more likely to be well above the age average than like the people.
I'm gonna give you my spiel, which is there's no other thing that would get people organizing and talking about local politics in April, uh, May, June, if we didn't have the DFL process and you just like kicked it to a primary in September or August or something.
That sounds very much like what Josh Martin told me. I think it's just different. I think it's different ward by ward. Ward Seven is kind of its own. We're almost like isolationist in a way because we have such a deep dichotomy, like we have a deep polarization. We don't really have a strong like middle class in Ward Seven. We have the uber-rich and working-class people. So it just, those kinds of, that polarization gets really emphasized in moments like that.
And a lot of renters, and so it's hard to like even be in the community long enough to know stuff like that is happening. How many people move to a place and like immediately get themselves caucusing and conventioning?
Like Ward One and Ward Eleven are such heavily homeowner, but also so like middle class that I could see these types of caucuses being really representative. But yeah, there was a lot of people who couldn't come out that night because of the, the in-person requirement. When we did it virtually in '23, it was a lot more accessible. And I think that the state should just allow the ward committees to determine that ward by ward if they want to do it virtually or in person.
Do you ever wish you could run against Scott Graham every election?
I feel like I am. I mean, he's like the ward, he's the CD5 chair, like he's the one behind organizing our convention. Which is wild that I'm like, the power in Ward Seven is still the power in Ward Seven. Just because I won doesn't mean that the tables have turned. I, I really feel like this, like the secret sauce is in expanding the electorate and like reaching new communities and bringing them in. And not just fighting for the same old, same old traditional voters who are gonna come out no matter what.
I feel like we can uh close it down here on the border of Lowry Hill and East Isles, 22nd Street.
Are you going to the pencil sharpening ceremony?
Is that this weekend?
No, I don't know. It's soon. That is like the silliest thing.
It is.
That's so wholesome. It's like the Tulip House. Ward Seven is so cute.
It is the ideal way for a very comfortable person in a lakeside mansion to spend their money?
I love it.
Don't spend it on a PAC, spend it on a whimsical festival.
Exactly. Invite the people to come and watch you sharpen this make-believe pencil.
Spend your money on something whimsical. Don't spend it trying to defeat Katie Cashman.
Can I tell you like the most wholesome thing that I did today? It was just like a great Friday because I It was just like a great Friday because I woke up and helped a bunch of Bryn Mawr neighbors get a permit to like paint their street. It's like, this is what, this is what we want. Like, we want painted, we want artists to be commissioned to paint the streets, slow down traffic, make sure kids can get to school safely. Like, this is the kind of work that I always want to be doing. I gotta say, East Isles is also a really wonderful neighborhood.
It is the wedge of Ward Seven.
All neighborhoods are great, but I think East Isles is a great place to live because you're so close to uptown and the lakes. It's like, what more could you want?
Well, here we are at the end, Katie Cashman. Thank you for joining me. Good luck on your campaign for reelection in 2025.
We got this, fam.
I'm your host, John Edwards. This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. Thanks for listening and watching. Go to youtube.com/wedgelive. You can see us riding bikes. We're not breathing heavily because we're just out of shape sitting at a desk.
You know, it's been a long winter.
We've been biking this whole time.
Get those biking lungs back, back in action.
So watch this on YouTube and thanks for listening. Thanks for watching.